Good morning, all. It is a little after 8:30 in the morning. I will call to order a meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners. And to begin that, I will ask Rod to go ahead and take the roll call.
Good morning, Commissioners. On the attendance roll call, Commissioner Skaggs, Wooden, Womack.
Here.
Bukowski.
President.
Legrand.
President.
Hennessy.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Sparks.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Here.
Commissioners Callman.
Here.
Burl.
Here.
Ponstein.
Here.
Bolter.
Here.
Jones.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Green. Chair Steck.
Here.
Mr. Chairman of 16, here and three absent. You have a quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. I will now call on Commissioner Morgan for the invocation. Good morning.
I'm here.
You are. Well, good morning, Commissioners. I have this morning Deacon Paul Antor from Assumption Church to lead us in our prayer and our pledge this morning. He is a deacon at Assumption Church, which is kind of the mother church to Our Lady up here in Rockford. So I'd like to introduce Deacon Paul Antor.
Do join me in a moment of prayer and reflection. Merciful Father, we come before you this day to acknowledge our proper place in your good order. Grant us the gift of unity in our diversity. Renew in us the spirit of faithful citizenship. Deepen our respect for one another. Help us to again see and treat each other as neighbor. Open our eyes to listen well and to notice your movements among us. May the deliberations and decisions of this body reflect the best efforts and highest virtues of the citizens it represents. Bless our county and the communities, neighborhoods, and households that make Kent County a reminder of your goodness to us. We ask this today in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you for that. All right. Let's move to item number five, which is a special order of business, beginning with Darius Quinn. There you are.
Good morning, Commissioners. And while we are waiting on Al and Board Chair, I'd like to ask that Tara join me at the podium. And just a side note on the employee recognition program. We started this program, for those of you who were here at the time, during a time that maybe some Kent County employees were making the news for, not the things that we wanted them to make the news for. So for the past 20 years, I've had the privilege of working with Tara Beatty, who is here with us this morning. And I can think of no one else who embodies the spirit of customer service. She is probably, no, she is the most consistent provider of excellent quality service. And I'll let Al and Board Chair tell you more about why she's here this morning. So, thank you.
Good morning. It is our honor and privilege to acknowledge Tara's service this morning. One of Kent County's core values is to provide high-quality service to internal and external customers. We're here today to recognize Tara Beatty from the Kent County Human Services Resources Department, who was selected as one of our quality service employees for the second quarter. The individuals who nominated Tara for providing high-quality service to our internal customers wrote, "I just want to express my appreciation to you for helping me with the issue with the hospital. It brings me much comfort and security knowing that you and the entire Retirement Services Department are there to assist with any issues that arise. Thank you. You're awesome, Tara." Another retired Kent County employee wrote, "I've really appreciated your assistance and advice over the years. You are good at what you do, always kind and quick to respond. Thanks again for all your help." Please join us in congratulating Tara for her notable contributions to the retirees of Kent County.
All right. Thank you. Let's move to item number five B and call on Dennis Kent to bring us up to date on the Wealthy Exchange Project.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'm not Dennis Kent, sorry. My name is Nick Chazinski. I represent MDOT. Dennis was unavailable today, last minute issue. So, like I said, I'm going to talk about, I guess on your agenda it says Wealthy Exchange Project, but our project is the US-131 PEL study, where the Wealthy interchange is actually part of that study. So, what I'll go through is the US-131 PEL study, what we're working on with MDOT and others in the region here. So first off, what is a PEL? A PEL is a Planning and Environmental Linkages Study. I won't read everything here on the slide, but it's a way that we can do advanced transportation decisions outside of a program project. I want to be clear, we don't have a project programmed right now for US-131, but this is a way that we can study the corridor itself without a programmed project and help us in our NEPA process, to expedite that process. So, the segment in question here, or that we're highlighting here, is US-131 from 28th Street to Market Street or Cherry Street. This segment was originally constructed in the 1960s and has the highest volume traffic outside of Metro Detroit. MDOT's priority right now statewide is a preservation priority, but we also consider items like safety and local connectivity, freight access when we work on projects. Some of the previous activities that we've been working on, we formed a local advisory committee. There are members of the city, the county, cities of Wyoming and Grand Rapids. We have local business leaders also on this group, as well as other stakeholders. We've been working on data collection, engineering review, environmental constraints, and also working on a purpose and need with this local advisory committee. What should the purpose and need of this corridor be?
Can you speak into the mic a little bit more?
Yes, I can.
We're afraid that it's not being broadcast. Thank you.
Yes. So, after developing the purpose and need, we went out to the public via MetroQuest survey, received over 2,100 responses. And that pretty much validated our purpose and need. And what I'll do is go through here, the needs that we developed for the corridor. We have growing regional traffic volumes. We want to address safety and operational issues. Again, I said, MDOT's priority is preservation, so we want to address the aging infrastructure, address interchange operational issues, freight transportation bottlenecks. I'm sure we're all aware of trucks getting stuck on Wealthy Street Bridge, mobility challenges for non-motorized users across the freeway, opportunity maybe for more local street connections, public transit circulation and reliability for emergency vehicles. This purpose essentially repeats all those and what we're trying to do here with the study. So then, using that purpose and need, we developed some strategies and options as to how to tackle this corridor. And we went back to the public with some of these strategies and options and gathered their feedback. We went again with MetroQuest and also with virtual public meetings. We held those via Zoom. We had Spanish simultaneous translation also during those meetings. And again, we had almost 4,000 respondents on the online MetroQuest that we did. It was open for two months. I'll go through some of the items here that we had folks rate on. Here's a strategy that we developed. Enhance existing local street connections. Make these more accessible, wider sidewalks, maybe some landscaping, that sort of thing. An opportunity may exist if we're reconstructing the freeway to maybe add a couple bridges and reconnect some roads that had been disconnected via the freeway back when it was built. Some of those connections here are listed. We're still working through the logistics as to how to make these things work, but, you know, some good opportunities might be near Graham or Logan and Buckley there. Improved intersection designs for truck movement, so getting these trucks around radiuses, again pointing to Wealthy there. One of the common themes of feedback that we've heard is local neighbors and business groups appreciate if their local streets were not a freight route. We also had a mapping exercise with this survey, where folks could drop a pin and comment on issues where they saw them. And you can see here that Wealthy Street had the most comments or pins that were dropped. And then we also, another strategy is improving safety and operations of the freeway interchanges themselves. So this segment here of 131 from Hall to Cherry has, I don't know how many ramps exactly, I didn't count them. There's like 16 ons and off ramps in this corridor. So this is not current practice to have ons and offs so close together within a half, quarter mile. So one of the strategies would be to reduce the number, consolidate some ramps. And so with that concept, we developed some options and we put these forth to the public regarding which ramps might close, which ramps could stay open. These were not fully vetted out operationally. This was just some ideas as far as what the public feedback would be on something like this. So in this option, this is option one, and this option actually has Wealthy Street flipped. So Wealthy would go under US-131. US-131 would go over. There are some challenges with that engineering-wise regarding the southbound on-ramp for Wealthy, but what you see here would be, anything with a red X would be an interchange ramp that exists today that would be removed potentially. So this is option one here. Option two eliminates the Franklin interchange, now known as MLK Junior Street, has a full interchange at Wealthy and Hall. Those folks would be recirculated via local streets and potentially those new local street connections to Hall and Wealthy. We have an option that eliminates the Wealthy Street interchange. This option was not the most liked by the public, for sure, so not sure that this will move forward here. And then we have another option with split interchanges at Wealthy Market there, and then again with Franklin closing. So with the MetroQuest survey and our virtual public meetings, we've also been going out to lots of stakeholders. You see the list here of all the folks that we've been meeting with, now the Kent County Board as well. And as far as next steps for this study, we're continuing with travel and operational analysis for US-131 modifications. We're continuing with local advisory committee meetings and other stakeholders regarding the study, and how we're going to screen out these studies using methodology and what screening methodology we should use, based on the approved purpose and need. And then we're working currently with the City of Grand Rapids and Kent County regarding a $10 million state enhancement grant that was awarded to this project. And this project specifically focuses on Wealthy Street going under US-131. So we're working on the agreement there. We'll continue to review improvement options with the LAC moving into this winter and spring. And then finally, develop a draft PEL report that will produce an acceptable alternative or alternatives when we complete that. And then with that grant, when the final PEL report is complete, we're going to be, again, refining analysis of traffic operations, excuse me, developing what some other impacts of those alternatives are, continuing public and stakeholder outreach, all using that state grant. And then once that is complete, then move into a formal NEPA process. Again, we can't really move into formal NEPA without a program project, which we do not have at this point. So just wanted to be clear on that again. And that is all I have. I know you had a spot for questions later, but...
Yeah, let's take, if there are questions from Commissioners on this point, let's go ahead and take those. Are there any questions, comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering what the timeline is on this for actually breaking ground, so to speak?
Yeah, I guess we don't have a timeline for that. So again, there is no programmed project right now. So a project of this magnitude takes many millions of dollars, and that's not something that can be easily programmed, right? So, once we identify that statewide, and maybe we're going to be going for grants, federal grants to help pay for this, then we can fully develop a timeline. But for all intents, we're probably, from this point to any breaking ground, it's probably at least five years out, at least.
Part of this footprint will be working together.
Yes, so some of our contingent has been in conversation with the amphitheater group. They've developed some proposals regarding the market interchange itself and maybe realigning some of that stuff. So yes, we have been in talks with that group as well.
Commissioner Bukowski.
Yeah, with this process, when is the, these next opportunities for us as citizenry? Because, you know, I'm an example of the worst person in the room, because I've driven this for 50-plus years. I drive it three or four times a day today. And so I have lots of opinions, especially where your X's are. You know, I also drive the Fuller and 196 interchange, and then, you know, the beautiful way y'all did Coit and Lafayette to really enhance pedestrian underneath 196. And it's like, how can it be that hard? You just do what, the work you did on 196 on 131. And I know the different, one difference is, the problem with 131 is there's too many curves. And the little curve at Burton Street, between Burton and 28th Street, causes backups every day, as your traffic count in my eyeballs can tell you. The S curve, of course, is America's greatest highway stretch, whoever developed that. So I mean, all of those issues that, yeah, five years to get to what? I mean, I don't know if there's a question in there, but, you know, like how best to engage in this, and then we're all going to bellyache and it's going to be normal the next week?
Yeah, so right now, we're working on a PEL process. So there is going to be another opportunity to engage publicly with this PEL, to comment on what we come up with as acceptable alternative or alternatives. Then we're not done at that point. So then we're going to move into a pre-NEPA sort of a project planning phase, where we're diving in even deeper, giving more opportunities for public. What do you want if Wealthy goes under? What do you want Wealthy under to look like? How wide are the sidewalks? Do we want artwork on the Bridge of Mountbuns, that sort of thing? So there's going to be many, many opportunities for public to weigh in. The MetroQuest was great because it reached such a broad group of folks, from residents to commuters, so people that drive it every day. So a lot of people commented on the congestion issues and the operational issues of 131 and the constant, everyday incidents at Franklin and Wealthy there. Those wealth, sorry, those left ons and off ramps are not standard today, and those would be something for sure with any project that would be mitigated against and would greatly improve operations. So I don't know if that answered your question at all, but...
I don't know if I had a question.
Okay. Many more opportunities, though.
I told you I was the worst person.
Okay.
Well, you're not the worst. So Commissioner Womack.
What is the name of Franklin Street?
Martin Luther King Jr. Street.
Yeah, so why isn't it referred to that?
So this was developed prior, so the MetroQuest survey itself, and these graphics were pulled from that MetroQuest survey. All these graphics were created in, I believe, February, and I think that name change was right around, that was right at the cusp of that name change. So yes, with future graphics, these will all be changed out, for sure.
Okay, because it needs to be. And we're here in October, midway through October from February, and it's been changed most places, but that's very small. You know, it's very important to me and my community and the whole scope of this. How was it promoted to communities, neighbors, and to the business communities that align this, for them to attend your public Zoom meeting?
Yeah, so I worked with Roosevelt Park Neighborhood Association there. We also worked with South Division Granville Corridor Improvement Authority leaders to try to get the word out on the public offerings that we had during the March-April timeframe when the survey was open. And we had, I sat in some board meetings with Roosevelt Park. I know some of my other representatives sat in with the South Division Granville CIA. We've been to Hart Side as well. So we have been engaging with those local folks to get their feedback on this. One of the things we heard from Roosevelt Park specifically was the trucks on Granville, and if there was anything that we could do to help mitigate against, you know, additional trucks going down their local streets. Granville currently is, or I guess Cesar Chavez, is currently not a truck route in the city, so...
Did they have a chance there? Because I've visited Roosevelt Park, did they have the chance to tell you that even though it isn't a truck route, for some reason, there's a big influx of trucks coming down there? And if anything in this plan can do to help alleviate that illegally, these trucks have just begun to make that a route for the last couple of years.
Yeah, and we talked, or they talked at a West Michigan Sustainable Business Forum about that. It's a public, how do I say this? It's like an enforcement issue, right? So either the police or somebody has to enforce trucks that are driving on these streets that are not local, or that are not truck routes. So one of the things, as we continue down further operational analysis, would be, well, you know, going out to these freight companies and making sure they're aware of what the truck routes will be in the future, too, and which routes they should not be driving on.
Well, thank you very much for all of the hard work in this, and I definitely look forward to looking at it a lot closer. I do think with closing on the Dr. Martin Luther King exit, that there needed to be a little more engagement in that community on the southeast side and the 4907 in that area, because I think it'd be kind of alarming to people that have been looking for it, to the Dr. Martin Luther King being displayed across. But more than just a name display, when we look at Franklin Street as an exit off of US-131, I'm sure there's going to be some neighbors that think that that exit has been utilized and can continue to be utilized, and for development along that street, that is going to be very important. But I'm one of the representative of the neighbors. I'm just a neighbor helping neighbors, as the rest of us Commissioners are. So I look forward to finding out when the next ones are, so we can engage that neighborhood, we can engage Urban League, we can engage NAACP, and some of the other organizations. Link up those that I feel are doing a great job of representation over there, as well as our area pastors, to get the word out in the church, so that they can weigh in and you can have an opportunity to let them know the logistical reasons why this would be more beneficial. But thank you so, so much for your work in this. And how would the community contact you to be able to give you their opinions on some of this?
Yeah.
Is there an email address or office address?
Whoops, sorry, guys. There is that website there, the michigan.gov/US131PEL. Within that website is contact information and a public comment section as well. One other thing that we've done with some of the locals there, Granville Avenue of the Arts, Roosevelt Park, we've handed out flyers with a QR code that would direct folks to this webpage that has our purpose and need and other great information, and then also has our contact information on there as well. So those have been going up around the neighborhood as well.
And when we speak about Cesar Chavez, this avenue that's referred to as Granville, we're talking about from US-131. And when we travel west, we travel a few miles before we hit Wyoming and other areas, but we're talking about a neighborhood when you're looking to the east, from US-131 to Plymouth Street. And it seems like that neighborhood hasn't been engaged. Would that be correct?
I don't believe that that's correct. There's been some reaching out with that South Division Granville, with that Roosevelt Park, with others in the area. So we've reached out with Grand Rapids, City of Grand Rapids staff to help us reach appropriate neighbors as well. And moving forward with this next phase will be even more broad with our net.
Okay, well, I just want to help as much as I can to make this process as easy as it can be.
Thank you.
And neighbor-friendly. But you keep saying Granville, which is Cesar Chavez Avenue, and then we're talking that would still be to the west, and we're talking about the east of 131.
Okay.
And the engagement. But it looks like there's, thank you that there's so many more future opportunities for the neighbors to engage, and my questions don't take away from the great presentation and work that you've done and your whole organization. So I just want to thank them for all this work and this presentation, because it gives people a chance to definitely know what's going on and how they can be engaged to make sure this services their area the best.
Thank you.
And thank you, because we do need some updates on US-131. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Legrand.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to thank you for being here, Nick. I know you and Dennis and Tyler have done a great job bringing this to the different neighborhood groups, and I thank you for your willingness to do that. As you know, the Wealthy Street redesign is very near and dear to my heart. As a downtown resident and someone who lived just off Wealthy Street, in my time on GVMC Policy Committee, Transportation Policy Planning Committee, I've realized that MDOT time is not like human time, not like 24-hour days. But I really want it, all of us really, to be able to take part, because as soon as anyone realizes that their little interchange, their connection with the 131 is going to be affected, they really care a lot. So I'm really hoping that we'll all be able to get the word out as the study progresses, so that you just get a ton of feedback, because so many people care and so many people, you know, have a stake in it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. Real quick, if you can refresh my memory, who sits on the local advisory committee currently?
Oh, man, I don't have a breakdown. We have City of Grand Rapids, City of Wyoming, we have The Right Place, we have the Grand Rapids Chamber, we have DGRI, we have Kent County Administration, we have Kent County Road Commission. There is South Division Granville CIA, Grand Rapids Parks, I believe, Grand Rapids School Foundation. I'm probably missing somebody, because I don't have my list. And then MDOT, the Federal Highway Administration, and then our consultant that's helping us as well.
Gotcha. So, I mean, one thing that comes to mind is the relevant neighborhood organizations that you've referenced are not on here.
Yep.
And many of these are well esteemed, well, you know, deserving organizations, but I do think it would make sense to have representatives of those neighborhoods most directly impacted beyond the South Division corridor. of those neighborhoods most directly impacted beyond the South Division Corridor, CID, or CIA, you know, especially since CIA's represent both residents and business owners who both have relevant and important stake in this decision. But neighborhood associations, especially the ones that are adjacent to this stretch, RPNA, being one that I know of well, and others, have engaged neighbors who have a full understanding of that community and will understand how these changes will affect them. So I would just urge you to consider their addition. And then when it comes to the acceptable alternatives, does that derive from the LAC or does it derive from MDOT? And how, who deems what's acceptable?
It derives from the LAC and the public.
Gotcha. And is it the committee or MDOT who determines what's acceptable?
Ultimately, MDOT is the owner of the system, right? So I think at the end of the day, we have the final say, but we're definitely taking everybody's word, you know, with whatever we end up drawing up. So the LAC and the public are advising as to what we do. But at the end of the day, it's our asset that we are building and we'll have to maintain in the future as well, so.
Wonderful. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? If not, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you.
We'll continue to watch the progress here with great interest.
Thank you so much.
All right, our next special order of business, we have Matt Grosser here and Deb Aldring to present to us on the Local Emergency Planning Commission.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Deborah Aldring. I'm still the Chair of the Kent County Emergency Planning Committee. I'm happy here to report. It's been a couple of years of our activities, our achievements, and our proposed work plan for 2023. I wasn't sure who all the new commissioners were, so I thought I'd remind you of why the LEPC exists. Back in 1986, an American company, Union Carbide, accidentally released enough methylisocyanate to kill over 10,000 India residents and their children and elderly, and they were all living in the community. So the United States looked at that and said, are we prepared to do that here? What are we going to do if that happens to us? So they took the existing law at the time, which was the Comprehensive Environmental Compensation Liability Act, which is Superfund. They amended it in 86, and then in 89, it was promulgated. So what this is, is that we then formed a committee by law, and the committee represents, the committee members represent all the different aspects for planning for an uncontrolled release of an extremely hazardous substance. So I thought it would be nice to see our new committee members. They all re-upped after two years. It's a two-year term for all of them. I'm the Chair still. I'm with Fishbeck. I'm a certified industrial hygienist, a chemist, biologist, and registered nurse. Dustin Brown's with Industry, Sean Byrne with ISD. We very much involve the schools for a couple of reasons. We use their buses for mass transit. And then we need to help, we need to work with the schools so they know how to shelter in place, because that's kind of difficult in buildings. We have Kent County Road Commissioner, Mike Lenartz took over with from Tom Byall. Lance Corey, we have to have prehospital transport for obvious reasons. He's with Kent County EMS. Spectrum Health, Doug DeVries, Second Ward Commissioner, our government represented just signed on. His name is Ron Dreher. He's the Second Ward Commissioner. We're happy to have Ron on. He was with Facilities at Davenport, so he kind of did some of this when we had the airport exercise a couple of years ago. Pat Draper with the Health Department, Allison Furley, she's the Grand Rapids Fire Department's Emergency Management Coordinator. Chris Striebel with Salvation Army, Laurel Fife with Havlin. Matt's with me today. He's our Vice Chair, and he's also the Emergency Management Coordinator. Joel Lafergi with Wood TV, Mike Lenartz, Jason Lovell, Steve Luther with The Rapid. Jessica with Amway, Heather Miller with U of M Metro, Jeff Nowrat with American Red Cross, Nancy Shane. Nancy's been on the committee one month more than I was. We both started in 1989. She's with the City of Kentwood Fire Department. We're very happy to have Nancy still on. Molly Sherwood with Hazardous Waste with Kent County DPW, Scott Seiler with Caladonia Fire Department. He represents fire. And that is our committee as of today. They all re-upped. They're up for two more years, and they all joined subcommittees, too. So our committee's back and going. It's kind of our reset. Because of COVID, we had some downtime there with not being able to have an open meeting. This is what one of our plans look like. So March 1st of every year, companies, fixed facilities, that includes growers, retail, and industry, they fill out a form called Tier Two. And in this Tier Two, they have to report if they have certain extremely hazardous substances in certain quantities. So we take that information, and then we develop this plan. So we did 30 new plans last year. We revised 227 plans. We submitted them June 31st, which is by law, we have to submit every single one of them. And so I can say right this minute that Kent County, including the City of Grand Rapids, is in full compliance with SARAH Title III. So LEPC subscribes to something called a Tier Two Manager. This is not the most friendliest program, I can tell you, but it is there. And these Tier Twos go on to this Tier Two Manager, so we can start pulling these Tier Twos off after March 1st and start writing our plans. We typically just go with annuals. A lot of times during the year, they'll do a revised or an amendment. But then we give access to all these off-site response plan to response agencies through the cloud now. We used to do paper copies. We graduated to thumb drives, and now we're into the cloud. We organize them by fire jurisdictions, but we give them to everybody, because we don't know mutual aid agreements. And before, you know, a lot of times, these corporations will do these Tier Twos, and they don't know if they have a Grand Rapids fire, if they have a Grand Rapids address, that they automatically assume it's Grand Rapids Fire. And we used to get all these, no, that's Kentwood Fire, that's Cascade Fire, that's Grand Rapids Township Fire. So we just give them to everybody. And we also include the water jurisdictions now, because there's a new regulation that came out that said any water municipality also has to have access to these response plants. And so that's all been done, too. So we did not have any releases last year, which is great news. Every year, we used to have one or two releases. There might have been some hazardous material releases, but we only are concerned with the extremely hazardous. We give a free seminar every year with our Industry Outreach Subcommittee. We usually have 100 attendees. Last year was really exciting, because we did it virtually. We couldn't, we had difficulty getting a room, and there were still some people hesitant to get that many people in a room. So we did it virtually, and it really went out well. And we think we had over 100 attendees. We at least had 110 registered. We have another seminar scheduled for the 4th of November. It's usually the last Friday of the month, and that's scheduled at Amway. Every three months, we meet, and then we kind of go through the plans. The plans go to the fire departments first. They get a chance to look at it and see if they can live with that particular plan, especially the vulnerable zone. And then we vote on them. The Public Information Subcommittee just got resurrected, and so we have an LEPC website. That needs to be updated, we know. We are, we use Joel Lafergi a lot as our liaison. He's done a really good job in our exercises. He kind of is the obnoxious information guy that comes in and challenges the public information officer, and everybody appreciates that. And then we work with facilities. And our big goal this year is that we want to make sure that all the facilities that we plot out in our zones, in our zone, if that cloud was coming their way, know how to shelter in place, they know how to evacuate local jurisdictions, especially American Red Cross and Salvation Army, because we want to make sure that if they designated a school or church as their shelter, that it isn't in the vulnerable zone, where they'd have to change it at the last minute, where everybody would know that was their shelter. So that's been, that's part of our strong goal for this year. We do have a Transportation Subcommittee, and our main goal with this is mass transit. You know, who, how are we going to transport a lot of people? We have to evacuate. And who's going to supply the buses or the school buses? And so that, their big thing is to help, because EMS can't transport. So their thing is mass transit, and we're working with the Road Commission on that as well. And then we, part of the law says, okay, now that you wrote these plans, test one of them. So we pick, we take a site, and usually we have a lot of people that want to do this because of their own desire to test their own plan, to see how it would coordinate with off-site responders. So this year, we did Roscam baking call. Mark House used to be, he's the Environmental Safety and Security Officer for Roscam. He was a voting member for 20 years, and he ran our Industry Subcommittee. He recently retired from the LEPC, but he continues to work at Roscam. And he bugged us enough to say, look, we just got more inhydrous ammonia. It's up on our roof. We really need to practice. We really want to see what's going to go on, because their corporate headquarters happens to be in the vulnerable zone of their ammonia system. So they increased their ammonia system at, or their ammonia system at Broadmoor. It is extremely hazardous substance, anhydrous ammonia. And this is kind of a picture of the great turnout we had there. What the scenario was, is what happens with ammonia systems, that if most people don't like to have the liquid lines in their plant, because if it releases, it's a major evacuation. It impacts a lot of people. It impacts their food, you know, because it stores in cardboard and packaging materials. So then it offgasses, and they lose their whole manufacturing site. So what they do is they move those lines up on the roof, which now makes it a community problem for us. And a lot of them use these helicopters to bring down their air handling units. So we pretended that this was happening, even though it did happen. I mean, they did, they did have a helicopter bring an air handling unit in, and they wanted to see how that would all work out. So we, everybody showed up, fire showed up. Matt was really good about calling all the vulnerable needs people. So the schools showed up. It was a huge, make sure that the dispatchers were there, so they would know how to pull the information off the response plans and provide that to jurisdiction. So we had them at about 10 o'clock. Weather Service was there, too. So they were saying it was a still day, no rain, which would have, the rain would have helped us out, but we wanted to make sure it was worst case. That's the point of impact that we pretended happened, which would be in their liquid line. So what I did is I took that 42,000 pounds to show you how big of a cloud this would be, because at that point, it would release their whole system. You convert that into cubic feet, multiply it by the expansion ratio of 855, and we would have one heck of a cloud of 575,000 pounds coming somebody's way. So then we take that information, and we plot it out into what we call our vulnerable zone. This is, Fishbeck is the contractor for this. This is done by a National Guard computer-aided design guy that just loves doing this. And I tell them, put everything in there that would be hard to evacuate, churches, schools, daycares. We're not going to put retail, we're not going to put residential. We all assume that, and so does fire. But in this case, if it was on a Sunday, for instance, and everybody was in church, how would we notify these people? How would we get them out? How would we shut off their fresh air supply? Sometimes churches don't even have that. So this is the zone. And then we, you know, everybody that was in this zone, there were quite a few people there, so that they could comment and see how they would, how they would help us to either keep their people in the place, so we know where they are, communicate with incident command. And it gives everybody an opportunity to see how this plan would actually go into action. So we did that, and we've got several people on deck that want to do that for their sites this year, too. So we never, we are never hurting to do a tabletop or a full-scale exercise once a year. And so you can see everybody in there, and everybody's communicating. Roscam had all their management team there, too, so they could see the impact of this, just to give everybody some warm and fuzzies. Most people that have this much ammonia have a process safety management plan, where they have to constantly inspect these systems. They have to do integrity testing every three years, change out their valves every five years, stuff like that. So the prevention part is in there. We just want to make sure if something like that on tour would happen, are we prepared as a community?
I'm going to let Matt talk on the Citizen Corps.
Morning Commissioners. I always chuckle when Deb introduces herself, because she's an industrial hygienist, a nurse. I'm sure she's like 5 million things, so. You set the bar high, Deb, and we appreciate what you bring to the community, though. She's my first phone call when we have an incident anywhere at any of our facilities where we have these emergency, or... In terms of volunteers, the Emergency Management Volunteers in Kent County, we have a robust program. That doesn't mean that we aren't looking for additional volunteers. We are always trying to onboard folks. Basically, what we've done in the last few years is tried to consolidate the management of our volunteer teams, what we refer to as the Kent County Emergency Serv- All right, so the Kent County Emergency Services Team, or KEST, provides the leadership for all of our volunteers. There are several different groups. Many of you are probably familiar, having seen them on social media and perhaps on the news. We have probably the state's best search and rescue volunteer program in Kent County, complete with bloodhounds and what we call the ground pounders that are available to go out there. And I also have the Citizen Emergency Response Team. You may be familiar with that, green helmets and green backpacks, if you've seen those before. We also have a Medical Reserve Corps, folks who are medically trained that can help respond to emergencies and disasters within the community. And then we have an Auxiliary Communications Unit, which is basically the amateur radio folks. They are just phenomenal. They're always willing to come and help out, and they supplement the emergency communication systems that we use, not only in the county, but also the state and federally now. We're involved in what's known as the Sheriff's Program, so that connects federally. I was with Salvation Army yesterday, and one of their volunteer groups called Saturn was instrumental in Hurricane Ian response with the Hurricane Watch Net. And so they were actually running the Hurricane Watch Net up here from Michigan, taking reports from residents in Florida that were experiencing disaster relief need, and trying to get the correct resources connected. Just, we're very thrilled to have those resources available to us here in the county. Those would be the teams that we would add to the public safety responders, should we have an emergency of this nature with chemicals in one of our facilities.
A quick mention on the Citizens Corps Council. I took that training. It's 20 hours. It's free. And when I took it, there were Boy Scouts, and there were Catholic Daughters. There were all these groups that took it. And like I said, you get these cool backpacks, you get all this interest. And they did show up at a couple of our emergencies, especially when we had some other. They went to nursing homes and helped evacuate elderly, dementia people, you know, help them get all their supplies and their comfort things. I was part of the Medical Reserve Corps, too. That's another group that is really instrumental. Doctors, veterinarians, we always use veterinarians. So it's very worthwhile, if you ever hear of this, to volunteer these committees, because they're just a good community resource for everybody. So we do have an, we do have a website, albeit we are going to update that, too. That's one of our goals, just getting us back to going. But it's information regarding SARAH. We've got some videos on there, how to stay safe in a chemical emergency. We have educational materials, again, how to stay safe in a chemical emergency. And so that's what we did last year. Like I said, the biggest news for us is that we are in full compliance. The state gives us letters saying, yep, you're in compliance. We're good. We've got state police involved, DEQ's involved, FBI is involved. So everybody's got our plans. Everybody's good. So this year, what we're planning on doing, of course, is we're going to continue to write these plans. You know, one of the challenges for us is that as people fill these Tier Twos out, we can't amend them. So if they have the wrong fire department, they have, you know, maybe they put the wrong amount. I got one guy, he said something like he had a million pounds or something. And I said, a million? You went from 1,000 pounds to a million pounds? And, you know, he just added a couple of extra zeros there. And I can't change that, but fire is going to pick that up. So you have to call them up and say, you got to resubmit. Now you got to do an amended one. Then we've got to pull that off, and then, and make sure our plan is accurate. And we don't really have a system in the year to do that. So that's why we attach these Tier Twos with all of our plans for fire, so that they can do their own fireman's right-to-know walkthrough. We're, like I said, we're going to continue this. We're working with the railroads. We don't have to worry about Bakken crude this year, but we do work with CSX, especially when they're hauling hazmats through our community. Going to exercise a plan. We're probably still going to continue to do tabletop, because recognizing the fact that most of these fire departments we work with are paid on call and jobs, and go a whole day and exercising, and it's kind of disruptive. So these tabletops work really well as well. We are public information. We plan on doing some more right-to-know. We're working with the Health Department very carefully with that, especially working with special needs groups. Again, the public information, I'll just go through that. So we have this website, and we have all these resources on there. We have them in the libraries as well. We have our videos in the library. It's our history, our meeting schedules. It's an open meeting. Come on in. We recognize anybody who shows up. And then, again, we're going to, we've got this industry outreach. We're starting November 4th. It's going to be, have to do with planning this year. And we're already starting to get quite a few registrations. We have an Executive Subcommittee, where it's basically Matt and I, and now the new Subcommittee, any of the Chairs for the Subcommittee also do that. We get a grant every year. We apply for it, and we get it. It's called the Hazardous Materials Emergency Planning Grant, usually 1,000 to 1,500 or so. And then I was just asking Matt, if that goes into the general fund, it does stay at the Sheriff's Department. We used to use that money for postage and copying, but we don't do that anymore. We used to use it for flash drives. We don't need that for anymore. So it's just kind of sitting there to, if we ever need it. But right now, everything at our industry- to, if we ever need it. But right now, everything at our, our, our industry outreach seminars, the room is donated by Amway, the food is given to us by Univar and Gordon Foods. I mean, the prizes are by everybody in the community. So it's just all donations right now. We haven't had to tap into that. And we just updated our bylaws because we has an issue with quorum with people not, not really happy about coming to open meetings. We, we are subject to the Open Meetings Act so we can't vote on anything. And during COVID, the shutdown, we had a problem with keeping our members engaged. And now that that's back up and going and we had a quorum and we voted all our new members in, we're, we're up and running. So that's it. That's the LEPC.
All right. Well, thank you for your presentation. I'm not sure I'd tell 19 Commissioners you have money sitting there to not know.
I know. I know. I couldn't, I couldn't stop it as it was coming out, you know?
All right. Any questions, comments from Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Stack. Deb, welcome. Thanks for all your work. So I've heard these reports for years. I think we got a lot of great companies who have lawyers and insurance companies to make sure everything is good, less risk for the business. And we still test to make sure that everything would happen okay. So we always are dealing with accidental release of chemicals, substances, and whatever else. Has anyone ever made the suggestion or the thought that shouldn't we also be addressing when it's not an accident, but it was intentional?
Oh, yeah.
And it was attack on the city?
Yes, we have. A few years ago in Wyoming, we had an active shooter that accidentally shot Michigan turkey producer's ammonia system. So we had the SWAT teams involved and like you said, or we had a couple of cases where we used a disgruntled employee who just got fired for, for intentionally releasing. But yeah, we have brought that up. Yes. Well, this community, this committee though is, and I'll let Matt talk about, this committee is just dealing with the EHSs. I mean, sometimes we, we coordinate with like a full scale, like you said, like a nuclear, and I have been involved, but that's kind of his, his deal with emergency.
I think your question is more directed towards emergency management as a whole rather than the LEPC that focuses on facilities with the EHS of that particular quantity. Some of the transportation routes and that type of thing, those would be exercises that we may conduct in emergency management. That may be a little bit outside the scope of the LEPC, but I'll tell you, she's still going to be on the, on the contact list because depending on the product and where it is, she's got a lot of the ability to use Cameo for plotting and determining direction and how that applies to the particular product that is released. But in terms of intentional incidents, manmade concerns and that type of thing, I can tell you, we're very focused on that in emergency management this year. Right now, we are focused on what is called the Rescue Task Force, which is a component to sort of active shooter, active assailant response. Tonight, actually, we have a, a class and then an exercise down in Colerville, working with local, state, and federal law enforcement, as well as departments, all combining together to make sure that we are conducting stop the bleed treatment in as rapid as process as possible while extracting victims from that type of scenario. In certain scenarios like that, what we have done is incorporated a hazardous material release as part of that. Aurora, Colorado is a good example where the assailant used OC spray in the middle of the shooting was ongoing. That created a component to that call that required certain PPE equipment to be brought in with police as they were responding to that. So that is absolutely something that we are training on. Even the water plant that we practiced with last year at the Plainfield Water, it was actually a celestial event with all the talk that we're hearing about satellites decaying from their orbit and coming down and wreaking havoc on the surface. That was the incident there, but you didn't know that at the onset of the incident. And so law enforcement had to respond, do a quick investigation on what caused this incident before they could move on to those next step.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yeah, Commissioner Andrew.
You had alluded earlier about air handling units. There's a lot of different systems throughout this area and these corridors and stuff. Who do you have working on that? It seems like it's a really important part to know how each building handles that type of thing and how you shut those things down. And who handles that type of coordination with the owners?
Well, again, that would probably be coming through emergency management, but we partnered with health department and we do have a how to shelter in place. And one of our goals over the years has been schools because most industry will have the same basic type of major air handling units, HVAC systems. The schools however, if they have radiant heat or, you know, I, I used to say, okay, so you, you guys are just going to say, shelter in place at this school. Now, who is going to know when they don't have onsite custodial services anymore? To climb up that ladder in the, in the janitor's closet, pull that big hatch off. Now that girl's probably got high heels or flip flops on. Now she's going to go up this ladder and then she's going to know what air handling is and she's going to know where that supply air damper is because a lot of times they'll have consultants or they won't have a central shut off for that supply air. So that is one of the things why I was so happy that Matt brought in the schools when we did this tabletop, because that would be the order. If you've got this cloud coming at you, you don't have time to evacuate. You have to shelter in place. And so the, the schools, like he took that back to ISD and said, we need to practice this. We need to send this out to at least the schools. And then in some cases with the churches, they don't, they don't have an air handling unit a lot of times. They might have open windows or, you know, they're congregating out in the parking lots. We had one plan a couple of years ago and since then they've reduced their chemical amount. But we had 63 churches that are in vulnerable zones. We said, if that happens on a Sunday, you know, and they're all having coffee and donuts out in the parking lot, we're, you know, we're, we, we won't have the resources. And luckily that company dropped down their amount so we didn't have to have that big of a zone. But we, that's, that's one of our guides because a lot of people, they don't have, they don't have the luxury of having a custodian or an engineer onsite anymore that understands their system. These are consultant. Some of them will have on computer, but most often it's a manual pull off that supply air intake. And it is a big deal.
Well, I appreciate the due diligence because that could be the weakest link.
Oh, it is. It is. It is. And it's mostly with the schools and residences too. I mean, that's another thing is, like I said, in our library, we've done a, we've done a video. We had Miranda in there. We had a video on how to shut that off, how to seal outdoors and fireplace dampers. And we have brochures on it and we're constantly on it because, like you said, that is going to probably be the number one order.
Sure. That makes sense. Well, I appreciate your due diligence and the update.
All right. If no one else, again, thank you so much for your informative report and for all your hard work in keeping this community safe.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item of business is a public hearing and I will declare a public hearing on the 911 Plan Adoption. If anyone is here that wishes to address that issue, you may do so at this time. And I see no one, so I will accept a motion to close the public hearing. It moved by Commissioner Skaggs. It was supported by Commissioner Coleman. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose say no. All right. The public hearing is closed. Next item of business is the public comment. This is the first opportunity for the public to address the board. This opportunity is to address us on matters that, only on matters that are on the agenda. So if you have an issue that is on the agenda and wish to address it, you may do so now. You have up to three minutes and please identify yourself. There is a second opportunity to address us later in the meeting. All right. If not, public comment is closed. Then we'll move to item eight and call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move the consent agenda.
Support.
It is moved, supported by Commissioner Womack. Any discussion? If not, this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to our resolutions. Item 9A and I will call on Commissioner Teal.
Thank you Chair Stack. I move resolution number 103, the 911 Plan Adoption.
Court.
Moved, supported by Commissioner Morgan. Any comments or questions? I see done. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 103, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 103 is adopted.
Thank you. Now move to item 9B and I will call on Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you Chair. It is my pleasure to move adoption of resolution 104 of today's date. It is a Kent County Guardianship Program budget amendment. It comes to us from the probate court.
Is there support, supported by Commissioner Coleman? Comments or questions? I see none. Madam Clerk, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 104, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 104 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 9C and I will call on Commissioner McLeod.
Thank you Chair. I move resolution 105, new position request. That comes to us from the Department of Public Works.
Support.
It is supported by Commissioner Womack. Any comments or questions on this motion? I see none. So Madam Clerk, again, this is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 105, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yep.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 105 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 9D and I will call on Commissioner Teal again.
Thank you Chair Stack. I move resolution 106, the appointment of the county medical examiner.
Support.
Supported by Vice Chair Breevy. Comments or questions from Commissioners? I see none. Madam Clerk, it is a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 106, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yep.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Chair Stack.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 106 is adopted.
Thank you. We'll move to item 9E and I will call on Commissioner Jones for this motion.
Thank you Chair. I move resolution 101322107, land donation from Kent County Parks Foundation.
Is there support?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Wooden. Any comments or questions? I see, oh, Commissioner LeGrand. I thought we'd make through all of these without a single comment.
Thank you Chair. This is a question for Dan if he wants to get up and answer it. Was this not the park where we were talking about, you were talking about having a dog? Dog park? Was this the one? Because I didn't see it on this plan.
Right. That, that is an option there.
That is still an option?
Correct.
I didn't see it on this, so I wondered if it had been removed.
That's a, just a preliminary design that we put out, so.
Okay. Okay. That's still in consideration though? Okay, great. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Jones.
Thank you. Dan, while you're up here, can you explain the plan with the current cart paths and if those will be utilized or gotten rid of? What's the plan for that? So.
So we'll evaluate the existing asphalt cart pass. The goal would be if they're in rough shape, we'll probably just remove those and either repay them or do some type of fresh limestone. But yes, we would utilize as much as that, as we could.
And then what's the timeframe of this closing and then becoming actually usable? Because I know I'm going to get that question right after this meeting.
So hopefully in the next month, we'll be able to close on the property with the foundation. There's still some legal work that needs to be done between the developer township. Once that's handled and then hopefully this winter, there will be a development, fundraising campaign. And the goal would be to start as soon as possible once we have the money to develop it.
And I know there's a, if I could follow up Chair, I know there's a request in for ARPA funding for the development of this. Let's say that doesn't happen. What is, what is the projected timeframe for this to be up and running? Or does it just depend on when the money comes in?
It'll depend on when the money comes in, but the foundation will be actively raising funds.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, this is a roll call. So Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt resolution 107, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Sparks. Teal.
Yes.
Vice Chair Breevy.
Yes.
Commissioners Coleman.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Bolter.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Green.[1690.32]
Yes.
Chair Steck.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution one zero seven is adopted.
Thank you very much. That is the last of the resolutions on the agenda for today, so the next item is our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone is here that wishes to address the Board of Commissioners with respect to their matters and their jurisdiction, you may do so now. Please identify yourself by name, and you have three minutes, up to three minutes, excuse me.
Ooh, cool. How you doing, everybody? My name is DeAndre Jones. I stay at nine six seven Temerack Avenue, Grand Rapids, Michigan, four nine five oh four. First of all, I'd like to say I won the Community Spirit Award through Link Up, so you're looking at the community spirit leader. I'm a beautiful person. I knew I was going to win it. I remember being nominated like two or three years ago, and I lost. And I was like, I just need to put in more work, and I just need to go harder, and I need to stay passionate, and I need to stay consistent. So usually I don't give up on things I really want. And I was a Link Up fellow. I was there, that one of the brave souls and courageous souls speaking up when Patrick Leoya was killed. I was the facilitator for PBGR. I was the voting coordinator, so I overseen all eight libraries, a couple of community organizations. I had to carry two big tab, boxes of tablets. It was crazy. But, and also was the president of basketball operations for the BU Summer Basketball League. So my work is very well-recognized, and I definitely feel like I deserve that award. And shout out to everybody in the community that congratulated me, because I inspired a lot of people in the hood, too. I hope I get to get people out in the community and give back to the community, because I've been giving back to the community since I can remember volunteering at many, several nonprofits that we have in the community. And it's just an honor to really win that award. Also, I wanted to just talk about, a little bit about my proposal. I got a little bit of feedback about it. I read the feedback on my proposal, and it was what the guy at House said, that they didn't, I didn't explain what I would have done with the funds if I would have got it. Well, if I did get ARPA funding for my project to buy the Adelante High School, which is in the Black Hills in a predominantly African-American Hispanic neighborhood, I would utilize that building. I would refurbish it. I would get the building rendering. I would reach out to, I would pay for services from Marquee Equity. They helped raise at least three billion dollars for companies at the highest. They've helped somebody raise two hundred and fifty million dollars. I would utilize that platform. I already have my pitch deck. I have my business deck. But I kind of need to help to get those in front of those investors to pitch my business idea, and they would help me do that. And so I also wanted to just talk about, just giving back and just staying passionate, you know, giving back to the community, loving the community. I think I've embodied that, and I've showed that. And I'm also, I just made a semi-pro basketball team, so you see, I got my warm-up. I'm a very good athlete. I won a state championship. I led my high school basketball team to the state championship. So I've been a statesman for a long time, and I know what I'm capable of. I just want to tell people, if you have a goal, if you have a dream, if you have a passion, don't give up, because I stopped playing basketball to build a business, and now I'm playing basketball, and I'm building the business. And so I'm excited to, you know, give back to my community, play basketball, and potentially build my dreams. I appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, DeAndre. Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Steck, Commissioners. My name is Dave Hildenbrand. Good to be with you this morning. I'm joined with my colleague, Mark Anderson. We are a group of volunteers that are building the new Kent County Fairgrounds and Expo Center out in Lowell Township. Just want to give you just a quick update. We're actively constructing out there. We're on phase two. Phase one was to purchase the property and make some improvements on Cascade Road. Now we're actively building. We've got driveways, parking lots, all the infrastructure going in, working with Consumers Energy. And we'll be capping off phase two soon with fundraising and moving to phase three, which is a twelve to fifteen million dollar effort. We want to build a world-renowned expo center, a year-round expo center, also a two hundred and sixty campsites for camping, to host large events that people will come from all over the state and the country. So we're really excited about it. There's a great partnership opportunities, we feel, with the county out there as well. There's a number of acres of county parkland, and I'll let my colleague, Mark, talk a little bit about the potential partnerships with the county parks and recreational opportunities out there as well. Mark?
Thank you. I guess what I'd like you to look at is, instead of looking at this as just fairgrounds in Kent County, I'd like to look at it as a massive collaborative effort amongst the multiple municipalities with Kent County Parks. We've partnered up with them, and we're talking about a hundred and forty acre site for the Kent County Fairgrounds. But when we add in the Kent County Parks, now we're talking about something that's closer to seven hundred acres. And that also ties in with the Michigan Greenway, which is connected to the Kent County Fairgrounds, which would connect to the Kent County Parks. The other nice thing about this collaborative effort is that it offers us all these endless educational opportunities that we can use on both pieces of property, that will benefit not just Lowell, but it'll invite, I think it'll benefit the entire West Michigan. So it's a great project. I'm very proud to be involved in it. It's been a huge, massive effort, and we would appreciate your consideration for this project.
We feel this is a transformational project for the county. I think it hits on three key pillars. One is agriculture. You know, it promotes and advances agriculture in our county, in our region, in our state. Number two, we'll have a very core education-centered program with this. We'll have an agriculture education center. We'll bring in students and young people from all over the region, urban, suburban, rural, to learn more about agriculture, to expose them to agriculture, and encourage them to be a part of agriculture in their future careers. And then finally is the economic impact. We'll have thousands of people from all over the state and the country visiting our area. They'll be buying things, staying in our hotels, and purchasing things, which will be great economic activity for us as well. What sounds like our time is almost done. We have applied for the ARPA funding. I know you've got a lot of decisions before you on that. We feel this is transformational. Would really appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
There will be a day, Dave, when you-
Or learn more about it, we'd be happy to talk to you.
There will be a day when you'll enjoy that bell when you're sitting there.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for your time, everybody.
Thank you for that. All right, anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sidney Dean. I live at two one ten Leffler Street, LA. For the past forty years, I have been coming here, speaking to, not exactly youth people, but I recognize a few other names that, you know, are about to see, the Grand River and our wastewater treatment plant. We are killing Grand River along with every other city who left their wastewater, left their wastewater open to the Grand River. They, the smaller-
Eat fish, the little silver minnows.
They're all wiped out. You can put down the dam, you can see them like thousands. You don't see that no more. Catfish. My brother caught a catfish, those life forms that accidentally get away in that mess. They are eating this, the skin right off a catfish. They are very dangerous. You can ask them, they're, do not want to come in contact with them. Hit one inside, you ain't nowhere to get out. So you do.
Children go into, remember sometime Wade and playing or whatever.
Lake Michigan, Land Haven, all our family was out there. You don't know any of those life forms are there or not, in that water. You get in one of those children, that's our whole way to come. I'm going to tell you like this.
New people and the city will get together. Y'all could, ah, 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 purchase a treatment, a filtering system.
Out there, the waste treatment plant, our wastewater treatment plant. I, I, I submitted a, I had a, I had a smoke party guy down in the city.
Officer.
And he runs that place out there, going to head it in the mirrors or whoever he is. I explained to him about my filtering system. My filtering system will, will take all of these, these life forms out, just take chemicals out the water. It'll make it clean, what you got in the water system from the lake, put it back into the, that's the way we should be doing. Put it back clean, and what we got. So, but I'm saying, it's still, hey.
This is something that's got to be done, because every year, thousands, hundreds and thousands of gallons being pumped in.
That lake out there, which is going to kill that lake, because it almost going to kill some women.
Sorry.
You don't want to hear it. Okay, but hey, something's got to be done.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, anyone else?
Good morning, Commissioners. Daniel Scott, resident of Kent County over forty-five years. More importantly, I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. That's my real identity. First of all, I'd just like to offer, if any of you need prayer for a personal issue, family, business, wisdom to conduct your services here, let me know, and I'd be happy to do that. When I was here last time, I appealed to you to use some of this money that the county seems to be flush with to support poor, many poor, women and their husbands or boyfriends that are, the woman is carrying a child that's unwanted, unexpected, and giving them an option to birth the child, keep the child, and allow us as a county to help them financially, at least get started, so they can keep that child. And we would have more citizens in our, in our county. I was also here last time to appeal to you to do all you can to support our county DA, Chris Becker, who's one of the three DAs in our whole state, who is willing to support the nineteen thirty-one law that declares that what the world calls abortion is indeed murder. So if you can support him, all you can, what a brave man he is. Here's another reason why we need to stop this genocide. Again, at three twenty East Fulton, they average a hundred and twenty murders every month. Mr. Gordon, introduced him to you last time in his criminal past. But this is one of their methods. The world calls it the partial birth abortion procedure. The murderer is guided by an ultrasound, grabs the baby's legs with the forceps. The baby's leg is pulled out into the birth canal. The murderer delivers the baby's entire body except for the head, hence the name partial birth murder. The murderer then jams scissors into the baby's skull. The scissors are then opened to enlarge the hole. The scissors are removed. A suction catheter is inserted. The child's brains are sucked out.
Thank you.
Causing the skull to collapse. Then the dead baby is removed.
Thank you.
Three twenty East Fulton.
Anyone else? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Letitia Lipscomb, and I am the Director of Engagement and Relationships for Amplify GR. I am here today to advocate briefly on behalf of the everyday people who live, work, play, and worship in the city's urban core. Those people who have held quieter or muted voices in a neighborhood that has historically been bypassed and overlooked in terms of investment. And though our presentation before you speaks to the stark disparities that exist on the opposite side of a mere red line, my goal is to focus solely on what we can do together today to address some of those decades of disinvestment in four nine five oh seven and intentionally improve quality of life for a time that you and I may not live to see. Because geography should not determine destiny, AGR and several committed community partners submitted a request for ARPA funding to support an innovative, holistic, and upstream solution to a deep-seated systemic issue. We are asking Commissioners for your courage to help position people to thrive and not just survive. The Boston Square Community Hub will be the neighborhood's front porch and living room. This is the centerpiece that will accelerate the Boston Square Together project. This project is already eighty-three percent funded, and it meets the mark directly on improving community health, quality of life. It implements infrastructural changes, and it provides economic innovations through workforce development, training, as well as programming. The Boston Square Hub is an equity-focused solution and an anchor that weaves health, education, arts, culture, and technology in a neighborhood that many have disregarded or left behind. This development honors and uplifts neighbor priority, and it really gives us an opportunity to respond based on authentic, inclusionary, and intentional engagement. This plan and supporting it with ARPA funding is a community collective design, but more importantly, it can make a bold statement that this county is committed to widening pathways with us for not only the life that people need, but the life that they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning.
Good morning. Eric Brown, President and CEO, Urban League of West Michigan. I was before you guys before talking about the ARPA funds, so I won't go down that path again of the technical part. I just will encourage you guys, as you guys are going into prioritization, to think about both the spirit and the letter of what was handed down from the Federals and how that was, how those funds should be administered equitably and according to their guidelines. Also, as a, as a follower of the Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, I'll encourage you guys to do justice and love mercy in your deliberations on your priorities of these ARPA funds. As governments in the past, or in the Bible times, were, as the Bible says, were judged by how they administered their, how they took care of their poor and oppressed, and that's a biblical standard. And so I just encourage you guys and mind you guys as well, as in your prioritizations to do likewise. Be mindful of those things as you guys go, and appreciate you guys doing so. I also will encourage you guys for, request, request a little clarification. And from the last meeting, there was discussion about timelines and deadlines and things like that. So I just would request that that can be publicly clarified as far as what those timelines and guidelines were. Thank you for your time. Appreciate your service, and looking forward to these transformational things. Yes, we do have proposals in, and I think are, are very well positioned to help transformation within those communities that have been historically disadvantaged. We've been in this community for almost eighty years, doing this type of work. So been here before, I don't think anybody here is eighty. We've been here long before any of us.
Thank you.
Well, with all due respect, my apologies.
The old tag.
That being said, we have a longstanding history within this community of doing this kind of work. Looking forward to this.
Rough crowd.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? All right, if not, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the Administrator's Report.
Yes, next week, we have a budget, another budget presentation. This time, it's the non-general funds that do not start on ten one, so they start on January one. And you'll recall that this year, the board is adopting a nine-month budget, and that we're implementing a ten-one fiscal year for all county funds, starting October one of two thousand and twenty-three. Also, we'll be implementing a five-year CIP at that time as well. Okay, let's see, what else? Last week, we had the kickoff week for our Disney Kent Way Customer Service Initiative. We had a leadership training week, and it went really well. And the week prior to that, we launched the Robertson Brain Health Work with the Health Department. Sheriff's Department's already been through it, so Health Department is first up with that initiative. And also, we've been, Jenny has been doing some work with KCAA. Well, actually, I should say first that we're close to ending the process to find a new director, and also shortly after that time, we'll be launching our county's first Toyota Catalina initiative with that department, really looking at the weatherization process as one of our first processes to attack and improve. Also, we did post a couple days ago for the Strategic Impact Director. That would be the final piece in completing the Administrator's Office reorganization. And obviously, we've been very busy with ARPA and setting the table for tomorrow's preference ranking session. So that is it for today.
All right, thank you, Al. Next item is reports. Any reports from Commissioners? Is that a report or a point?
It's a report.
All right, Vice Chair Breevy.
Thank you, Chair. I have a brief report from the Department of Public Works. The board, the board voted to keep tipping fees the same for next year, and the Board of Public Works is committed to evaluating and making decisions. Works is committed to evaluating and making decisions on disposal fees that will keep our facilities running today and into the future. And keeping tip fees the same for the next year provides consistency and stability for the waste haulers and the customers they serve.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Coleman, thank you for staying awake, I know you've been at it all week, you and Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you, Chair, that's what I was gonna mention, myself, Commissioner Hennessy, Commissioner McLeod, spent the last three days going through-
Sorry, and Commissioner McLeod, yeah.
...of the senior millage funding requests. So we're almost all the way through that work, and those funding recommendations will be coming this board's way soon.
Great, thank you. Again, sorry, Commissioner McLeod, I forgot to add you in that group, so appreciate your work. Anyone else, any other reports?
A lot of work.
It is a lot of work. All right, I don't see any other reports, so we'll move to miscellaneous. Does any Commissioner have a miscellaneous item to raise? Commissioner Morgan?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair, being a senior member of this board. About six years ago, I switched my desk drawer with Commissioner formerly known as David Lokowski, I don't recognize him, but in this drawer, I've saved his candy bar, and here's a couple more candy bars, I'd like to get back to them, so if you don't mind, if you could pick this up after the meeting, I'd like to give it back.
All right, that would be fine, I see that one of them's partially eaten too.
I have a couple things.
All right, any other miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Coleman?
Chair, a bit of a personal announcement, I have here a photo of the newest Coleman, who, unexpected blessing, but is due to be born on Christmas Day, probably will come a bit before that. And I just wanted to add, with Proposal Three on the ballots in November, that would permit Jen to terminate this little guy, if that passes. And I wonder why, you know, 15 weeks before, you know, he would be born, it's okay, 15 weeks after, it's not. Well, thinking through the difference, the, what difference does that birth make? And I think all of us would probably be opposed to, you know, personally, to terminating a 15-week-old. So why do we have the opinion in our society that we shouldn't do that? Because it's a separate human being, and in reality, it's clear, you know, it's a separate human being at this point, too, before birth. So that, that really doesn't, that moment of birth doesn't make a difference, and so I think we should all consider that as we're voting, you know, why should reproductive freedom stop at birth? And the, many would say, well, there can be limits, you know, Proposal Three allows limits on abortion, late-term abortion, but I can read, and it's got a very kind of specific and broad, you know, set of exceptions to those limits that could hypothetically be put in place. And those limits really wouldn't stop any late-term abortions. I don't think there's any pregnant woman in the state of Michigan today that anybody could find that would not be allowed, those exceptions. And so I think we should consider, do we really want Michigan to have one of the most extreme abortion laws in not only the United States, but also the entire world as we vote?
All right, thank you. Any other Commissioner miscellaneous? Yes, Commissioner Womack?
Yes, being at the county level, I know there's a lot of national issues that are gonna affect us locally and statewide issues, but just going back to some of the things that are in our purview and in our policy reach, and here at the county, I get, I want to start off by thanking one of our neighbors, congratulate Dee Jones for his award, and all of his work I've seen him do in the community. Also, just want to, without putting any proposals above other proposals, but just thanking the people who came out today, and just highlighting just how excited I am to see some of these proposals that are coming in, and just, you know, to continue to encourage the communities and the leadership and the nonprofit organizations and everybody that's building it, just thankful that so many brought us proposals. I just, I love the fact that it's Kent County Expo that was presented today, I wish they would've talked about the capacity for people at that expo, because a lot of times when we, being with radio, I see people coming here to bring in conventions, or calling us to ask us what's available, and most of the time, if it's booked for the whole summer, there's no way for new conventions to get in here, so I think that's just a great thing, idea, and like I said, not lifting any proposals above any, but just letting people know we are listening. Also, this Boston Square that's gonna have a community hub, family housing and mixed housing, just some great proposals coming in, Urban League and their emphasis on entrepreneurship in the community, the Wyoming Project that we've been hearing about, just thankful for all the proposals, and I'll be here tomorrow, thank you, Chair, and Al, for our meeting we're having tomorrow to update us on some things and get involved, so just keep up the good work to everybody in Kent County and to our community neighbors, because we can't do it without you. Thank you.
We'll see how thankful you are at noon tomorrow, but all right. Okay, anyone else? Yes, Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair, just to tag on to Commissioner Womack, I've received, how do I say numerous, because it's a lot more than that, letters and emails of people that are presenting their programs to us. Tomorrow begins the process, try to narrow it down. You know, reading through the list, there are needs all across this county, and I appreciate the time and effort that people have brought forward their projects, their ideas, to make this a better community. Sadly, there's not enough money to go around, and frankly, I think maybe we, as a country, are gonna get to a point where we're running out of money. So hopefully, I'll have the wisdom of mine, Al, to look at the ones that can have the most impact. I know the years that I sat on the land bank, some of the most successful projects were something we did on a corner that created interest in the neighborhood, in the community, and the people that lived there bought into that. So those are the types of things I'm gonna be looking for. I don't think our solutions to our problem in this community are something that government's always gotta solve. Personally, I have more faith in the people that live there, live in the communities, they know best, and they're gonna have far more creative ideas than I'll ever have. So thank you for all the comments that I've received from the people. I'm sure I didn't get back to everyone, I tried, but I think so far, the process is gonna be, has been good, and hopefully, the end result will be positive for all, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner miscellaneous? I don't see any, so we'll move to, well, before I go to that, I'll just have a couple of extra comments. Yes, we will be convening again tomorrow morning at 8:30, try to be there so we can get started on time. This process, once we start moving, is intended to move fairly expeditiously, and so that we can get through all of these in time to complete it before we have to break. But at any rate, there are a lot of projects. Clearly, this has called all of you to do a lot of homework. If you've gone through all of those pages, some of you have gone through them multiple times, know that there are hundreds of great projects identified in there, good ideas, great projects, many of them will have lives well beyond ARPA, and probably realized regardless of what we do. So our job is to go through that and identify which of those projects we wish to participate through the ARPA process, and find a way of partnering with them. The process, though, is going to start with this measure, this attempt to identify where do we elevate the projects by interest, but it's not the end. We'll then take that process, the grading process, and move to an analysis, and eventually come back with a recommendation back to the board with specifics, both as projects and as amounts, and we'll have to do the heavy lift then in November, I think the intention is to take that into a final process for completion. So this is the start, it's a lot of work, but it's not over, so stay tuned. I will also say that there has been a change in the regulations with respect to certain aspects of how these projects can function, particularly revolving accounts. So we are looking at a communication that will go out today?
Today.
Okay. That will identify something with respect to alternative funding with the housing concepts, so please stay tuned, you will see that later today, and that will be on the process for voting tomorrow as well. With that, Commissioner Morgan, you're chomping at the bit. I move to you.
I'm gonna go slow. I'm gonna move to adjourn, subject to call the Chair, to October 27th for a meeting at 8:30 a.m. I did that without reading it, everybody noticed that?
You save the best for last, one of your best motions ever.
Good memory to be 80.
It was supported, I think, was it not? Yes, it was, all in favor say yes.
Yes!
We adjourn.